Call this meeting of the Rattone City Commission to order. Could we have roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor Sagata.
Present.
Mayor Protim Chatterley.
Present.
Commissioner Schuster.
Present.
Commissioner Jacamo.
Present.
And Commissioner Honeyfield.
Here. Would you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
(Inaudible) United States of America and the true republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I thank everyone for coming out tonight. Couple of announcements. Our next regular city commission meeting will be Tuesday, May 27th, 6:00 PM here in the chambers. All city offices will be closed Monday, May 26th, in honor of Memorial Day. And we've got three proclamations and a declaration tonight. So we're going to start with proclamation, National Police Week, May 11th through the 17th, 2025.
All right. Mayor Protim. National Police Week, May 11th through the 17th, 2025. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. And whereas the members of the Law Enforcement Agency of Rattone play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of Rattone, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of the Law Enforcement Agency of Rattone unceasingly provide a vital public service, now therefore does James Neil Sagata Jr., Mayor of the City of Rattone hereby proclaim May 11th through the 17th, 2025, as National Police Week. And call upon all citizens, all patriotic civic and educational organizations of Rattone, to extend a sincere and heartfelt thank you to all law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and in so doing have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. In witness whereof, the mayor has set his hand and seal and caused the seal of the City of Rattone to be affixed this 13th day of May, 2025.
Police, PD, or the year. I can accept it on behalf. Okay. Next proclamation, Emergency Medical Services Week. Commissioner Honeyfield.
Whereas emergency medical services is vital public service, whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, some days a week. Whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas the emergency medical services system consists of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others. Whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value in the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers. Now therefore, be it resolved, does James Neil Sagata Jr., Mayor of the City of Rattone, Rattone, New Mexico, do hereby proclaim May 18th through the 24th, 2025, as National Emergency Medical Services Week in the City of Rattone and invite citizens and civic organizations to extend a heartfelt thank you and to recognize the contributions which Rattone Emergency Medical Services make every day to our health, safety, and comfort and quality of life. In witness whereof, I appear to set my hand and seal and cause the seal of the City of Rattone to be affixed this 13th day of May, 2025.
Going in, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
We're going to back up a little bit and get a follow-up with the police officers. Come on in, guys.
You say your name. I don't care.
City Commissioner already read it, so we'll just take the picture. How about that?
Apologies.
No, all good. You guys are good.
Thanks a bunch. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you. Next up, we have a proclamation, Older Americans Month, May 2025. Commissioner Schuster.
All right. Whereas each May, our nation celebrates Older Americans Month to honor these countless contributions that older adults have made and continue to make to our communities, workplaces, and families. And whereas older Americans embody the strength and wisdom and perseverance that form the foundation of our society, having lived through and contributed to decades of progress and change. And whereas these individuals continue to enrich our communities through volunteerism, mentorship, civic engagement, and leadership, sharing their talents and life experience across generations. And whereas older adults have demonstrated remarkable strength and resilience in overcoming challenges and adversity, adapting to change, embracing new opportunities to lead fulfilling, meaningful lives. And whereas ensuring that older adults have access to supportive services, healthcare, affordable housing, transportation, and opportunities for social engagement is essential to fostering a society where people of all ages can thrive. And whereas Older Americans Month provides an opportunity for individuals of all generations to reflect on the importance of inclusion, respect, and intergenerational connection in strengthening the social fabric of our community. Now therefore, does do I, James Neil Sagata Jr., the City, uh, Mayor of the City of Rattone, New Mexico, does hereby proclaim May 2025 as Older Americans Month. And we call upon all citizens to join in recognizing the contribution of older citizens in prompting programs and activities that foster connections, inclusion, and support for older adults. Given that our mayor is Chief of Aging and Long-Term Services, and we're going to give this to him.
Thank you. And finally, we have a memorial proclamation honoring the life and service of Nick A. Tarfeli. Whereas on May 9th, 2025, the City of Rattone, New Mexico, lost a dedicated and valued member of its community, Nick A. Tarfeli, who passed away at the age of 59. Whereas Nick was born on May 24th, 1965, and throughout his life exhibited a strong sense of duty, integrity, and service to his community, making a significant and lasting difference in the City of Rattone. And whereas Nick began his career with the City of Rattone on April 30th, 1992, as a custodian at the Rattone Public Library, where he became an indispensable part of the library team and made a lasting impact on the lives of countless library patrons, staff, and the wider community. And whereas Nick's work ethic, kindness, and genuine care for others earned him the admiration and respect of his colleagues, friends, and the community at large. And he was known for his quiet but powerful contributions to the success and daily operations of the library. Whereas Nick's passing leaves a void in the lives of those who knew him, and he will be deeply missed by his family, friends, colleagues, and the many individuals whose lives he touched over his years of service. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the City of Rattone, New Mexico, that we honor the life and legacy of Nick A. Tarfeli, whose contributions to our community will not be forgotten. We express our deepest sympathy to his family and loved ones during this time of loss, as we remember his more than 33 years of dedicated and loyal service. We celebrate the lasting impact he had on the City of Rattone and the Rattone Public Library. Be it further proclaimed that a moment of silence be observed in his honor and that the City of Rattone flag be flown at half staff on the day of his memorial, Friday, 16th, May, 2025. In witness whereof, I appear to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Rattone to be affixed this 13th day of May, 2025. And we also would like to present the family with a flag. Sorry for your loss.
To present you this flag as a token of this public service.
Thank you. At this time, we will take items from citizens present. However, if you are here to speak on an item, an action, an action item that is on the agenda, please wait until that item comes up. And at no time do we discuss personnel issues. Anyone wishing to address? Commissioner Hare.
I'll just address who has a citizen tonight. A Commissioner layer, if you have questions. I was just gonna, I've talked to some of the Commissioners already about the mountain lions that are here within the incorporated municipality of Rattone. I'll just ask if you guys encourage you to reach out to the game and fish and push your action to that. I understand if I lived in Yankee or something like this, I had a big lion in my yard this last week. The game and fish didn't want to take any action due to, it's not aggressive. And I understand, I understand that, but when a mountain lion is not aggressive, I'm not so worried about the bears. I mean, if we have a troubled bear, that happens. But a mountain lion, it's either, when it becomes aggressive, it's going to be on my little four-year-old boy, or it's going to be on my dog. And I don't want to lose either of them. And, yeah, but that's all. So I just ask if you guys could maybe task the city manager, or however you guys do, if you could reach out to the, the New Mexico Game and Fish. Appreciate it.
Just a note, I did speak with him yesterday after our conversation. And, um, so they're aware and they, they do have some information, if anyone's interested, and I'm sure you got it, how to keep safe in your own backyard from wildlife. But aside from that, yeah, they, it's duly noted.
Yeah. It's pretty much carry a 30/30 if it jumps out. But, yeah. Thank you, guys.
Just a question on that note. There was a deer that got hit on Sugar Reed. What agency had to take care of that?
If it's within the city, typically the city Public Works takes care of it.
Even though that deer belongs to the State of New Mexico?
Even if it's a federal deer. Within the, within city limits, we sent a crew out to handle it. Anyone else wishing to address the Commissioner? Alrighty, moving on to the action items. I made deliberate and act on approval of the April 22nd, 2025 regular meeting minutes and the April 29th, 2025 special meeting minutes. There are no corrections or additions to the minutes. They will stand approved as presented. Any questions or corrections? Minutes stand approved. Moving on to item B. Item B is a presentation that is not an action item. Presentation of LIDA history and best practices by Secretary Lina, Director of Community and Economic Development.
Thank you so much. Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, it is a pleasure to follow in the footsteps of the economic development professionals who preceded me. For many years, the city has been working not only with nonprofits and strategic alliances in support of the advancement of our community and our economy, but also with very brave entrepreneurs and small and mid-sized business owners who are committed to contributing to this community. So what I'll do over the next several minutes is just give you an overview of the recent history of some of the programs that have been launched to support these very brave individuals and what the new best practices are in their activities and some recommendations for audit readiness, as all of them are getting ready to present their annual updates. So there are three programs in particular I will focus on, and they are not the only programs. We have many programs that are designed to assist entrepreneurial individuals and these small business leaders in advancing their businesses and in so doing, creating social benefit for all of us. One of them is the Local Economic Development Act. We have a few partners in that area. And Job Creation Acts and the Metropolitan Development Act area as well. And so we do have these partnership agreements in all three of these areas at the state level as well as the municipal level. Today, because of the internet and AI and the open opportunities for individuals under IPR and Freedom of Information Act, there is more scrutiny on these programs than ever. We have very well-meaning partners here in the city, and we also have a duty to them to empower them to be audit-ready and investor-ready in this environment of heightened scrutiny. That scrutiny can come from any level of government, whether it be federal, state, county, municipal, or tribal. And we have an obligation to prepare our partners to make sure they can withstand any form of inspection that they are subjected to. And so that is what we're talking about here. So generally, when there are social impact investors or social benefit investors, they require of the folks in which they invest to be prepared to present a variety of written documents and oral communications. And among those, when there are initial proposals, are 30-second pitches and pitch decks. Some of you may have heard of those. One sheets and two-pagers, which are abbreviated overviews of the opportunities. A very important area, which is pro forma financial statements. There are three types of cash flow statements that enable organizations to either prepare for or understand the degree to which they are generating enough cash from their businesses to sustain the businesses. And very importantly, that they're able to do so without depending on additional public assistance over time. And income statements that say basically what their net earnings or retained earnings are, as well as balance sheets that give an indication of the overall value of the business to the community, or if they were to be acquired to potential acquiring parties. In the social benefit investment or social impact investing scenarios, there are also reports that are often required in really a three-by-three-by-three matrix. So we try to figure out what is their contribution to our citizens at an individual level, to organizations in the community and to the community as a whole? How are they affecting human well-being and organizational well-being and community well-being and productive capacity and socioeconomic status? And also, what is their performance or activity record? What are the immediate outcomes of the programs or businesses they're running? And what are the societal impacts of those? They're also very used to in social benefit or social impact investing, used to giving regular updates on quarterly, annual, and multi-year, year-over-year performance reporting. Those are typically in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles and very often are prepared to field questions from the investors on what's happening in the market? Was there anything unexpected? Were there disruptions to what they expected to happen? How are they pivoting as a result? What kind of special accommodations might they need? And what's their rationale for additional investment? So what we are doing this year is helping our LIDA and J-Tip and MRA partners by providing for them an optional set of reporting tools that they can use to provide standardized, if they wish, business overviews, progress reports, and action plans. I wanted to ensure that the mayor and the commission and the community as a whole was available, aware that these resources will now be made available to these partners if they wish to use them. Thank you very much for allowing me to give this presentation.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Moving on to item C, public hearing, review, and discussion fiscal year 26 interim budget. Mr. Missus.
Uh, Mayor and Commissioner. I yield the floor to Ms.
He's coming.
I claim.
Nice pause there. I like that.
Perfect timing. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. So this evening, on the agenda, we've scheduled this as a second public hearing for our FY26 interim budget. I have prepared for you some draft documents for us to review. This is strictly just the general fund. The other funds will take a little bit more work because most of them are related to grants. And as you know, we have about 40, excuse me, I'm still suffering from allergies, about, you know, 44-plus grants. So I'll need a little bit more time to work on some of those amounts. And then the other major fund that we have is our sanitation fund, which is an enterprise fund. But for the most part, all of our discussions are centered around mostly the general fund because it is our operating fund. And as we've discussed in the past, the salaries generally make up probably about 75% of the budget. And then we have all of our other operational expenses. And then it, it doesn't leave much for the capital equipment purchases. So some of the discussion this evening, I am still seeking probably some direction on how much, at least a dollar amount, that the commission would maybe be comfortable funding some of those one-time capital improvements. On this face sheet here, I've kind of detailed some of the ones that we've talked about, such as Public Works. The animal control vehicle was already purchased, so that would come off. And then I think the big one's going to be the abatement expenses. We know that we have the J.C. Penney demolition coming up. And as we've brought some of those items to you, we have some pretty solid cost estimates, I think, on some of the abatement that's going to occur here, either the end of the fiscal year or the beginning of the new fiscal year. So that's going to be kind of a, a big one for us. So the figures that I've currently prepared do not include any capital equipment, capital outlay. So generally, the way that I start, or the method to my madness, is try to get our salary schedules prepared. At our last budget meeting, we discussed moving forward with the draft budget with a 5% for management, non-union, and then factoring in the union increases for the remaining contracts. So I've done that. And then just our normal operational expenses. So if we take a closer look at this, under the general fund budget revenues, you'll see I've showed this current fiscal year's budgeted revenues and then what we're proposing. I think the biggest thing to keep in mind is the prior year, or FY25, is slightly higher, but that's because in the final budget, we always factor in the water residual payment, if there is any. This past year, we also did get an RPS residual payment, but that's rare. So I, those are kind of some of the unknowns at this time. And if we did get any residual payments, we wouldn't add that revenue until the final I will let you know that in trying to, you know, balance the budget before we add any of the additional expenses that we're going to utilize reserves, I did craft the budget with a 2.5% proposed GRT increase. So that's something that I would, you know, definitely want to discuss with the commission, if that's something that you feel comfortable with. We are currently trending close to the 2%. A lot of these projects that we've listed on here, we know that we had put them in the FY25 budget, but, you know, several of them were delayed. And even like the airport projects are just recently starting. So a lot of that revenue is not really going to be realized until the new fiscal year. We are still waiting, obviously, on the Kearney Film School to resolve that. I don't know if we're going out to bid again, if we're going to try to use a state price agreement, but we are actively working to continue moving that project forward. The Maverick has broken. So we are optimistic that just the construction alone will have an impact on the GRT, but that will add to our existing tax base. So that's definitely something that we need, those types of businesses that will add to our existing tax base. So the water tank rehab project, I believe they opened bids on that last week. So that will probably be moving forward pretty soon. We do know that the Schuler electrical project is kind of in limbo because the funding has been pulled. But those are the types of things that I probably would need direction from the commission. I think you, during our planning sessions and some other discussions, we had discussed that the city could potentially fund the additional above and beyond what the grant was going to fund. But now knowing that we don't have that grant funding, that's something we would need to consider. We do have the small bridge project. I believe you have an item on the agenda tonight related to that. We have the Romero Park improvements. And another item on the agenda will be the North Underpass MAP project. Earlier this fiscal year, you did approve the library boiler. And not real sure if we're going to proceed with an elevator, but we know that that still is going to potentially be a need. We are completing the modernization of an elevator at the convention center, and it was probably around 120, 125,000 just to modernize. And then, of course, the J.C. Penney demolition. So just those projects that I've identified are a little over 16 million. So that's the type of information that I need to submit to the Department of Finance to kind of support any budgeted increase in GRT. So I kind of have to paint that picture for them, that we're being realistic in the estimate. And then as far as the expenses... And then as far as the expenses, I think a lot of the variances that we see here could potentially be because we budgeted for an animal control vehicle, and we, you know, purchased it in this fiscal year. So some of those items, you know, won't be carried over into the new fiscal year. So you kind of see a wide variety of fluctuations. But we did go ahead with the five percent pay increase. I did get notification from the state last week that we're getting a twenty percent health insurance increase, which that definitely hurts a bit because I had started the draft budget, budgeting a ten percent increase. So when I looked at that, I think overall, for all city funds, that was going to have an impact, probably about a hundred thousand dollars. So that's definitely some additional costs that probably were double what we were anticipating. One other thing I did want to mention is we are currently receiving additional revenues from the two grants for law enforcement recruitment and fire recruitment. We are going to be in the third year of the law enforcement recruitment, so it's going to be a lot smaller amount, fifty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. And then the fire recruitment, during the legislative session, they actually passed legislation to increase the year-two allotment to seventy-five percent, I think, of what we received in year one. So we'll get one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven fifty. So those two grants have provided quite a bit of relief within our general fund budget, but I think we still need to, you know, be cognizant that once the grants have been fully expended, unless DFA, I don't know if this is going to be reoccurring, where we can apply for these every so many years, that would be nice. But we would have to make sure that we're able to absorb any additional salary costs if we're hiring additional staff with these grant funds. So I think the police department, they pretty much were just trying to maintain current staffing levels. But with the fire department, the year-one grant enabled us to add, I think, three positions. But as we know, within law enforcement and fire, there is a lot of turnover, so the costs within those departments fluctuate. So over the years, we've kind of built up our reserves as a result of salary savings due to vacancies in those departments. So these grants, I think, have really helped us try to get to those full staffing levels. And if we can add a few staff, that's even better. One of the things I did not put in the budget, and probably would need to come out of reserves, we do have a law enforcement protection fund grant that we get, and that has increased considerably. It's going to be in the Fund 206, which is the special revenue, so we won't see it in these documents. But the commission does have to agree to pay half of those payments. So it's a total of fifteen thousand for any officer that has twenty-plus years of service. And so the city would commit to seventy-five hundred of that payment. So we currently have three officers that were eligible this year. And so you'll recall, we had a budget adjustment earlier in the year to add the third officer. And so our annual commitment for that is twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. If we go to page two, some of this information is carried over from the first page, but I like when we can look at it kind of, you know, the representation of the graph because it gives us a better sense of where our revenues come from. And so the largest chunk of the pie is obviously grocery receipts, the property tax. We did see a slight increase on the reports that I ran for property values, residential property values. So I think it's on, we'll see it here, like the fifth page. I did include in here for you the worksheet that DFA requires us to use. And so you can see what the final valuations were for 2024 for residential and non-residential. And then if you multiply that out times our mid-levy rates, and then we also reduce it slightly for whatever Colfax County's collection rate is, that's how I'm able to arrive at the figure that we have to put in the budget. So that's something DFA will check, so that's not a number that I create or make up. And then, you know, the remainder of the revenues come from grants, franchise fees, business licenses, licenses and permits. But seventy-six percent of our budget would be the various tax categories that we have. You'll also see in the transfers in, DFA currently makes us, I guess, record cannabis excise tax in a different fund. But at the end of the year, we're transferring that money back into the general fund. So that's part of the monies that are in the transfer in. And then we also, because the sanitation fund is an enterprise fund, we do process the payroll, the accounts payable, and then, of course, the work that I do on the reconciliations, and reporting, and all of that. So twenty-five percent of my salary payroll and our accounts payable comes out of sanitation to help fund my department as well. My department also is receiving an admin fee for administering the juvenile justice grant. So that also provides some relief within our budget. So I've factored that in as well. And then on the expense side, you can see in the graph, obviously, emergency services, police, dispatch, and fire make up the largest portion of our operating budget, and then the various other departments. So with the six million, three hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-two that we're proposing in expenses, our 1/12 required reserve would be five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six twenty-eight. Now, obviously, that will go up once we do the final budget and incorporate any other expenses that would be coming out of reserves. So I think typically, our 1/12 reserve's been probably closer to six hundred and fifty thousand. I also included in your packet here, the graph that would show the figure of a 2.5 percent increase. Now, we, the amount that we projected, obviously, this fiscal year, we're about 1.7 percent above that projected figure now. And then if we go with a two-and-a-half percent, just in the general fund, it would be about three million, seven hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And I know it looks like I gave you a lot of paper, but the last thirty-some pages of what I gave you is just the line item detail. So these bottom-line figures will carry over to the first four or five pages that I've given you. So if you want to drill down on the individual departments, I provided that detail for you. We still do have a lot of work to do on the budget to bring you a final budget. I think my plan would be by early next week, Monday or Tuesday, to have a final draft for you to review. We would bring that to you at our next commission meeting, which is
May 27th.
May 27th. But I would like to give all of you probably, you know, at least a week to review it. And then if you want to come to me individually with any comments or concerns, we'll still try to work with department heads and give them copies of their draft and kind of fine-tune it before we bring it back to you on the 27th. I did also include the draft personnel schedule, so you can see by department, it breaks it out in a little bit more detail, what the annual salary is, the clothing allowances, the taxes, the PRA, the insurance, retiree health, kind of all the different categories. And then you'll kind of be able to see what the increases or decreases were by department, and also by category at the bottom. I stand for any questions, if anybody would like to drill down on any of the information closer.
As we stated earlier, this is a public hearing. We're open for any comments from the public. And also, in the commission, any questions, comments?
The 20 percent health increase, change in benefits, better benefits?
No, I think they they actually eliminated one of the plans. It was a Cigna plan. I'm not aware that we had any employees that were on that plan. So we have a Blue Cross and a Presbyterian plan, a PPO, and an HMO. And so the more expensive plan, the employees can opt for that, but we still only do eighty percent of what the cheaper plan would be. They have to pick up the additional costs to be on those plans. But yeah, no, no additional benefits that I'm aware of.
Where are we at with Kearney School?
Right now, we, of course, we put out the bid. The bid came back too high. The city commission rejected that. So we went back to the contractor to see what they can shave here and there to either meet the budget, or maybe something that we can do under state price agreement. We think we should have the answers back from the contractor by, what, in about another week?
Within the next week or so. They said they need three weeks. We meant less than two weeks.
Well, we should have some answers in about another week.
Just being devil's advocate, what does that do to your budget? If we draw Curtis School and the Schuler electric project? Does that do to your groceries?
Like I said, it's kind of ironic that these are almost the exact same projects that we included in last year's budget, and we're still trending 1.7 percent above our projections. So, you know, I really can't explain really what's driving our grocery receipts in Rantone. We know it's online sales, and we have had a fair amount of construction. But yeah, that's a large amount of money.
We're also looking for alternate funding even as we speak. And so, you know, stand by, we're, you know, everything from federal, state, and private.
When we get down to the different expense, it looks like for 2026, there were several departments that saw some pretty drastic drops.
Yeah, like I said, a lot of it. Now, in the municipal court, they went to a part-time employee. I don't know if that would change during the fiscal year, but they're currently part-time. So we had savings from them not having insurance and being part-time. Animal control, that was mainly because we purchased the vehicle, and that was probably seventy-some thousand just for the vehicle. But then throughout the year, they had some staffing changes, and some of the employees are strictly part-time.
I guess the one I'm looking at is building maintenance.
Most of that would be related to, I had things like the Coors buildings, stabilization project budgeted in there. A lot of the other, just building-related, that's the biggest one I can think of, is the Coors building. So some of those projects were completed. I think that's what I was trying to point out earlier, that the fluctuations will look weird because we haven't put in any of these additional costs the commission's proposing to take out of reserves.
I guess what I'm looking at is most of the mechanical systems on these buildings aren't getting any newer.
And then I did not include anything in the line item for abatement. So in the current budget, we probably had over a hundred thousand in the abatement line item, maybe more. So that's why I just made the note, we still need to budget for abatement expense. So I think when we come back to you with the final draft, and I redo this comparison sheet, it will look a little better once we've added the building repairs. Certainly, the city hall repairs will fall under that building maintenance department.
For example, this building here, it says how many age packs are there?
I've never been up there. I Something like five.
I would say five.
And so we're replacing one, and then the four are at the same age?
I don't know the answer to that.
Because you know when you put a new one up there, the other four are going to be gone.
Well, it's the same case over at the Sun West building over here.
Yeah, the education.
That has, I think it has three, and it's empty. They were the worst. I know, and the same with the visitor's center. So that has three units that are
I want to say about three years ago, we replaced one of the units on this building.
They did doctor the others.
Not yet, but where to go, thanks.
I just, you know
I want to say, if Jason was here, he could probably answer. I want to say about three or four. I think we did do one.
Okay, that's the only question on my head on that.
Yeah, I think the building maintenance issues are just going to continue to grow. A lot of these things, we've just kind of kicked the can down the road for years. And I think we're kind of paying the price now, especially with what the economy has done, and just construction in general. So if we had done some of this stuff ten, fifteen years ago, we would have saved a lot of money.
I think Mr. Phillips must have heard me. I'll get to you.
Mo's already had replaced at least one of the units upon each side of the building.
That's what I thought.
And they're not all the same age, you just replaced some as we went over the last twenty years. So, I mean, three of them are probably similar age. One's less than five years old, and one probably twelve years.
Mr. Trill, any other question?
Yeah, just something to consider. I don't know how many of these are federal grants, but cash flowing them, and then thinking with the federal government, if they decide to stop pay. If you guys could cash flow that for a little longer, just throw that out there as something to think of.
Yeah, I mean, one of the projects that we've been cash flowing is related to Kearney School, and it's for the architectural expenses, some abatement. We did get clearance from HUD to proceed with those reimbursement requests. So it's probably about three hundred and fifty, four hundred thousand that we've cash flowed up to this point. So I definitely want to get those reimbursements before the end of the fiscal year and get that money back in the general fund.
Yeah, I got my allocation for aging Friday in federal. I took a big hit.
Can I ask a couple questions?
Sure.
Michael, and just a question about the legislative budget on the salaries. We do have the, I don't know if this is already budgeted in, but with the election coming that we have January through June.
We've talked about that earlier today. I'll need to factor that in probably to our final interim. I think I would have to budget six months at the current rate. And then starting July 1, it would increase to the thousand dollars a month. So yeah, I mean, it's pretty minimal cost overall. But yeah, that is one of the things that I would be adjusting.
I guess my other question is, is there an amount you have in mind that would be responsible to budget from the general fund to start prioritizing these projects? That's exactly my question.
No, and you know, the thing is, and I think I've told the commission this before, I mean, this doesn't have to be done as part of the budget process. mean, this doesn't have to be done as part of the budget process. We can do budget adjustments throughout the year and propose to take it from reserves. I just kind of like to do it during the budget process because DFA reviews everything so closely. I think it's kind of important to let them know what we're thinking and kind of how we're going to approach the new fiscal year and them not be shocked when we start dipping into reserves with these huge budget adjustments. But that's just kind of as a courtesy to DFA. I think it's good to give them a heads up that, you know, we're trying to maintain 412s, 512s, and that we have some money that we'd like to utilize for those one-time capital equipment purchases or projects. Last year, last year, we proposed about 1.3 million. Not all of that was accomplished in this fiscal year, but some of it was.
When I was adding them up, you know, it's easily over a million dollars. So I didn't know if we were feeling like our reserve was healthy enough for that kind of a time this year or...
Kind of projecting that our ending cash balance June 30 will be about 4,750,000.
Trust me, that's better than 700.
Yeah.
Oh, gosh. I need to learn more.
No, we've come a long ways. And it's been work of the staff and the city of general.
Yeah, and I mean, none of us have that crystal ball. I mean, we're not real sure, you know, with the, we know what the economy is in Raton, but you know, we are suffering the effects of some of the decisions to pull the federal funding. I think that hurts the small towns the most.
Exactly. I guess I ask. So I understand there's been four grants pulled back, and three of them are federal. Is that right? Do we expect any other?
We...
I don't know if the broadband was confirmed or if that was still just a rumor for sure the Schuler.
There was talk about pulling rural broadband. The White House, I guess, announced that Thursday or Friday, but we don't know if that is this year or next year. It just said they're pulling rural broadband. They didn't say when.
But do we anticipate it? Are there any others that might be at risk? Is really the bottom line of my question.
I think anything federal, that's not defense, is at risk.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, some of these agencies, probably even like EPA, which would be closely related with our Brownfield program, they've eliminated entire departments. So I don't know. It's just really hard to say.
We're moving forward until somebody tells us something.
Right.
But I agree, you hate financially to get in. And I think even with the Schuler, we're still trying to figure out if we've incurred costs, what the process is to at least get reimbursed for what we've incurred up to this point. So that's not real clear to us yet. We were pretty fortunate to proceed with the plumbing project, and that was all funded through a DFA matching grant and some of the donations that we received from the foundations.
I'm going to mention Mr. Phillips' favorite grant. I was told North Central, that there's some CDBG money. Would the Schuler qualify for that or not?
No, the Schuler generally doesn't fit the mold. We have not even taken a critical step towards the CDBG.
That's what I said, yeah.
Not something I could foresee us having capacity in any way right now. But I mean, with the federal stuff, it's not all gloom and doom. I mean, the reality is the Romero Park grant plus the police capital outlay is $750,000 of easy-to-spend money, and that's equivalent of a $750,000 three-year CDBG project. So even though we've lost some things on one side of the balance sheet, we've been really successful on others. And we've got a million-dollar Second Street project that hasn't hit yet. You know, I'm going to pitch another $900,000 in projects tomorrow in Las Vegas. So I mean, I think, you know, from a grant standpoint, the best money is still out there, and we're chasing it.
So some of what he's mentioned, we would not put in the budget until we actually got a grant agreement in hand. So, you know, we kind of know we've got some money coming out of this legislative session, but we just recently submitted the severance tax bond questionnaires. So until everything goes through the bonds cell, it would probably be August, September. I may not even have that information for the final budget.
Overall, I think we're sitting in decent shape.
We're in a good position.
Yeah. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, thank you, Michael.
Yeah, this is not an action item.
Really not a budget question. My question is, how, how safe is the Schuler if we threw off that electric project? Seems like electrical work you'd want to do as soon as possible.
The problem with the Schuler is that it's not something that we can phase and do a little here, a little there. It has been added on to in such a way that is not ideal, and basically you start touching the electrical systems and have it upgraded service. So you're kind of like, you got to jump in headfirst. But we did have that issue at the fire department a couple of years back, which is tied to the Schuler electrical. And there is always some risk of something like that happening again. The Schuler's been there for over 100 years. I don't know how long it's been, when electrical was first.
I think I might have lowballed the estimate. What is the estimate for that project?
For the Schuler electrical?
Yeah.
I want to say it was like around five.
I only put 300,000 in there, but yeah, it's probably closer to five.
The worst part of the Schuler is that we've seen almost zero interest in anybody that even been on the street. We've talked to some people that have. A lot of electricians are really busy right now, and it is a little more complicated than a lot of their jobs with the historical nature of the building. Because there was one that said, yeah, we pulled the plan set, but no, even if it goes back out, we're still running.
Well, and we are back out for bid right now. We went out before we knew that we lost the ancient grant. We actually hit it pretty hard, reaching out our outreach to statewide electricians. I'm hopeful that we will get some bids, whether or not we're able to act on them. If we receive them, we hate to burn that. We will, and once that does actually get you a bid, then not that...
Right. Thank you.
Right, any other questions, comments?
I'll plan to have you document about that sec next week to review.
I am the deliberate and act on appeal of resolution 202523 concerning a dangerous building or premises requiring removal for 436 Savage Avenue by Teresa Gaiagos. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor, Commission, in your packet is a letter from Chris Gaiagos on behalf of Teresa Gaiagos, appealing the dangerous building resolution. I would recommend that we do not grant the appeal based on the letter. The letter really did not state with any clarity why it should, you know, remain. However, I would like to call City of Raton Code Reinforcement Officer Mac McGary forward.
I'm sorry, I think...
They first.
Teresa and Chris.
Okay. Teresa and Chris, are you on the line?
I'm here. This is Chris.
Yeah, it's low. So do you want to hear from the Gaiagos's first? Sure, let's hear from the Gaiagos's first, and then we'll go from there. Mr. Gaiagos, you have the floor.
Okay, so I understand the city's looking to clean up. I don't blame them, as you noticed in my letter. And I would spend some time in Raton back in 99, before I bought this property. And I can just tell in the 20-some years how much it's run down. So I know there's much work there and probably a lot of concern from the citizens of Raton. And even though the stated point was made, and you're building a whole building that needs to be torn down and sitting there, but I think they're missing the point that the building is owned by me and regulation property, because it is not ownership. And I agree, it does need to come down. And again, I'm asking for a lot of time, and there was plenty of time that the city had this by proof of the tax history. There was plenty of history where they could have, the city could have done something about it, and they chose not to for some reason, I don't know. But that's between you all, between the board or the mayor, or you guys' function down there. We are looking into some things. As we stated, the HUD home, there is a program through HUD. We do have, I mean, this is just a family-owned property. We're not a, not a, I have a small business, I don't have a big business. So, and I do have several properties, but I know that can sound bad to certain narcissistic ears might think I'm just playing them, but I'm spread kind of thin on my budget plan, even though I am making ways with some of the other properties I started with, including the one two blocks down the street on Fourth Street. Yeah, if you look at that one, that one's been fixed up the past year and a half. New windows, not just the windows inside too. I tore out all the, all the burnt furniture that was in there, pulled out drywall and put in new drywall and insulation. And so that home is starting to look pretty good. And that, right now, as far as Raton and Colfax County, I, I put a lot of energy into that home, but I have other companies, I got properties at that I'm dealing with. So that's the other, the other reason why I appealed this. Well, I'm sorry, I thought someone was saying something, but... So I, it's all, with all due respect and all due fairness, you know, I think it's fair if the city can hang on to it for 10-plus years, they should be able to give me a allotted amount of time to take care of some of these things and try and do something with that savage home.
Do you have a projected timeframe?
Well, I would, I would think within probably two years would be probably to get started on something, between one and two years.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Gaiagos?
Well, Mayor, Commission, I hear where Mr. Gaiagos is coming from. A lot of the objections he raised in his appeal letter seem more directed at the county than directed at the City of Raton. There were many things about, you know, they didn't know that they're purchasing a burned property. Why was it not, you know, dealt with earlier? And really, that's neither here nor there. The county, the City of Raton has no control over the, when the county puts properties up, how they advertise their system of tax sale. That is not, you know, our, we don't get involved in that. And so I, I still really haven't heard anything to appeal what's written in our ordinance. Our ordinance is very clear, and it's been, we followed that ordinance to the letter, getting multiple inspections. Chief Burke rendered his opinion about the building, and we've followed that to the letter of the law, giving notice and everything like that. And so, in my opinion, I don't see anything in the appeal that outweighs the, the letter of the law within our ordinance.
Questions, comments? Could entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to deny the, the appeal of resolution 202523 concerning a dangerous building or premises requiring removal for 436 Savage Avenue by Teresa Gaiagos.
A motion and a second to reject the appeal. Is any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye. Pose. Motion carries. Thank you. Item E, deliberate and act on Raton Lodger's Tax Non-Promo Fund Request from the Raton Museum. Mr. Mestes.
Thank you, Mr. Gaiagos.
Mayor and Commission, in your packet is a request from Ms. Kathy McQuarrie, President of the Raton Museum, requesting funding for $32,400. They are including the, an activities list and 2024 balance sheet and visitor count. Again, this will come from the Lodger's Tax Non-Promo Fund, and the city recommends you vote in affirmative on this action.
Kathy, would you like to address this?
I can, if you'd have questions, I'd be happy to answer. If not, again, we appreciate your support for the Raton Museum. 86 years in existence and going strong. We have a heavy schedule coming forward for the next year. We're working with a couple of different organizations in regards to Billy the Kid's Traveling Wake, which will be an exhibit at the museum. We have three very popular artists throughout the country. They're popular. Tom Ross, who was one of the gentlemen we worked with last year on the baseball. We also have Bob Bowes Bell and Buckeye Blake. Buckeye Blake is actually doing the sculpture of Billy the Kid in Repose, and it will be traveling the Southwest, and will be in Raton prior to its final resting place, which is the new Billy the Kid Museum in Fort Sumner. So we're hoping to be able to have it within our facility for at least a month. So we're excited about that. It will be in Scottsdale, Lamy, Raton, and then Fort Sumner. So Bob Bowes Bell is doing artwork as well as Tom. So Bob Bowes Bell actually is the editor of the True West magazine. I don't know, most of you should be aware of that. It's a great, he has many books out. So Billy the Kid is one of his premier subjects that he works on. We're also working with the Schuler Restoration or the Schuler Commission, and they're going to be putting on film and some music the night before. Actually, we're talking about doing this August 8th and 9th as far as the festival, so to speak. So that's still coming together, but we've got a musical artist and a one-act play that's actually a shootout that will be coming back to you for event confirmation for First Street and tying it all in together with the three gentlemen that'll be here and make presentations as well as the exhibits. So I think that'll be a lot of fun. We're looking forward to it. And, you know, the other activities, we're going to try to tie in throughout that summer months with Billy the Kid speakers and different things. So we're looking forward to that. With the financials that you had in front of you, you may have noticed we had the grant from the Laird Private Foundation. With the financials that you had in front of you, you may have noticed we had the grant from the Laird Private Foundation for the security system. That money has been expended and the system is up. So again, we want to thank them for helping contribute to the security of the artifacts and the history of Raton. I stand for any questions, if you have any.
This is pretty much your standard request, Thomas, isn't it? Like, that's all.
This was the same as last year.
Correct.
Previously.
Thirty thousand, yeah.
I know our lodger's taxes had, I think we're okay, but I think, I mean, just to note that, not just for you, but for everyone, that our lodger's tax has taken quite a hit, and so we're trying to live.
Right.
Oh, this is non-promo fund, so it's a little different.
A little different, but it's still a percentage.
Still have a lot of non-promo already committed.
I guess I have a question or a couple of here.
Uh-huh.
But you turned in your tax report to the federal.
Yes.
And then on your income and expense, you're showing a depreciation expense.
Correct.
And that would be what creates that.
That is the buildings and fixtures. And that's, you know, mandated to be depreciated over a period of time. So that our original cost on that facility was over six hundred thousand dollars. So that's what's being depreciated on an annual basis. So it's high now because it's only been, I shouldn't say only, but it's been twelve years that we've, you know, been in that facility, so.
So if you add that.
That's a thirty-year, yeah, if you add that back in, correct. Yeah, it's, it's not a out-of-pocket expenditure, but it is reflected in the financials.
The other question I had was on your, you're showing an interest expense, but not a liability.
Right.
Credit card related or?
Actually, what it is, is there was a line of credit with N-Bank on the building that we had. That was paid off, so the small amount of interest that's there, that's the reason why you're not seeing the upside on that on the line of credit, because it was paid off. But there's what, I believe, I think it was like seventy dollars a month interest that we were paying, so it wasn't a whole lot. So that interest amount will not be incurred going forward.
That's the only questions I have.
Any other questions?
I would move to approve the Raton Lodger's Tax Non-Promo Fund request.
A motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thanks Kathy.
Thank you, we appreciate you supporting the museum, thank you.
Item F, deliberate and act on event forums, Sun Valley Rides Carnival, June twelfth through fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, by Raton Main Street. Can the International Santa Fe Trail Balloon Rally, July fourth through sixth, twenty twenty-five, by Raton Main Street? Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, in your packet are the event forums and liability insurance forums for Sun Valley Rides Carnival, June twelfth through the fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, by Raton Main Street. This is going to be out by the high school. And the International Santa Fe Trail Balloon Rally, July fourth through sixth, twenty twenty-five, by Raton Main Street, out by the old Glimesa Airport. You may vote on these events collectively or individually, and the city recommends you vote in affirmative on these two actions.
I would recommend we do it together since it's the same entity requesting this, unless anyone objects to that. Any questions for Raton Main Street or Mr. Mestes? We're getting off easy.
Motion to approve the event forums for Sun Valley Rides Carnival and the International Santa Fe Trail Balloon Rally.
A motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Because we want to get home early. Vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
A lot of detail too.
You had your shot, Chris, you had your shot. Item G, deliberate and act on lease and service agreement between Safe Haven Baby Boxes, City of Raton and Colfax County. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, in your packet is a copy of the agreement with Colfax County for the purchase and installation for a baby box at the Raton Fire Station. The county agrees to pay for the installation and box approximately fifteen thousand, and the city will pay a five hundred dollar annual maintenance fee. The baby box must be installed at a location that is occupied or manned twenty-four-seven, which is either City Hall or the main fire station. And we felt the main fire station was the better location. As you call, this was voted upon and approved last year, but due to some administrative delays, we are reintroducing this. And the city recommends that you vote in affirmative on this action.
Questions, comments?
I'm also here for any questions.
Thank you.
So Chief, what does that do to the facility? Because it looks like historic preservation is dictated, one or two of those windows that is either your office or the next one?
It used to be an office, correct. It is actually a common walkway area, little break room, whatever you want to call it, sink, but it's adequate. There is actually several other locations, but I countered and said that is the best and not in the alleyway or in the back between the Schuler and the back door. Just because of, it's not visible. And right there is visible with the counter from historic preservation that we leave the window frames somewhere in case we ever remove such item that they can go back to the original as stated. That was about a two-and-a-half, three-week process with historic, back and forth, kind of aggressive, but making sure I have answers moving rather quickly. They were very, very pro on that. Sent all the submitted papers that you have in front of you, they reviewed it. Once they had everything in line, we went back and forth and within three days I had an email back.
Do you feel comfortable that fifteen grand do that, will modify that?
Fifteen grand is actually four, because we brought the baby box itself from Safe Babies. It's their product. And we have two individuals doing in-kind for procedure and setup. So we're looking forward on that end, but it was the fifteen thousand and the five hundred annuals for the monitoring and the cost of box.
And so who's picking up the tab for the, you say that's donated, the install?
The install is on our, we have some in-kind we're handling on our side of the department. But the fifteen thousand part of the lease agreement and the contract is through the county and then the city picks up the five hundred annual.
Questions? More questions?
Mr. Disagreement between Safe Haven Baby Boxes and the City of Raton and Colfax County.
A motion and a second to approve, is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item H, deliberate and act on Resolution 2025-29, declaring surplus property and authorizing it to be donated to another public agency. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, in your packet is a proposed surplus property resolution and a government-to-government transfer to the village of Chama, New Mexico for a fire engine. This transfer is subject to the city obtaining an approval letter from the local government division and the Department of Finance and Administration. The city recommends that you vote in the affirmative on this action.
Questions? Something that's done quite frequently through our state. And the city of Chama, or the village of Chama, I should say. Appreciates us greatly.
Good question. I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-29, declaring surplus property and authorizing it to be donated to another public agency.
Motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2025-29, is there any further discussion? Yes, can we have a real call on this one, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor Scotta?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Shuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo? And Commissioner Honeyfield?
Mr. Mestes, thank you. Item I, deliberate and act on fee proposal from Engineering Analytics Inc. for the North Underpass Rehabilitation Project. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, in your packet is a fee proposal from Engineering Analytics Incorporated for the North Underpass Rehabilitation Project. The price is fifty-four thousand five hundred for providing design and construction phase engineering services for the project. This project is funded under the MAP project, and the city recommends you vote in affirmative on this action. And we do have a representative from Engineering Analytics here to answer any of your questions.
Ready, comments, questions? Everybody's getting off easy tonight now.
There we go. Yeah. Is there an hourly rate breakdown on this?
We have an on-call agreement with Engineering Analytics that provides hourly rates. So what we would request approval of the full estimate of costs on this. But we visited with Tyler and Karen last week, and it's possible, depending on how funding goes, that the T and M on the twenty-five thousand four hundred for construction phase services might be accomplished with a combination of them doing some of it and Jaden and I doing some of it. A lot of this work is a little more cosmetic in nature. We're going to probably power wash or sandblast and repaint the structures. But we do have a couple of concrete patches, some sidewalk to do, maybe a little less material testing than we do in a straight road project. So this is kind of a not-to-exceed estimate, but we do have hourly rates for principal engineer and testing services as well in the on-call.
This is favor nation pricing?
This is, this is favor nation pricing. And I mean, if Jaden and I can free up at all, we would gladly save some money on this. I mean, there's certain parts that we definitely like to see Tyler and Karen with their expertise out there. Some of the day-to-day monotonous stuff with it being a block from home, it wouldn't be much for us to walk across the street and do it. We think with the available grant funds that we have, that even at the fifty-four, five, we can get the project that we want within funding without going over, and that's our intention.
Any questions?
Motion to approve the fee proposal from Engineering Analytics Inc. for the North Underpass Rehabilitation Project.
Motion and a second to approve, is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item J, deliberate and act on a fee proposal from Engineering Analytics for the geotechnical investigation for the Three Bridge Project. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, in your packet is a fee proposal from Engineering Analytics Incorporated for the geotechnical investigation into the Three Bridges Project. The price is nineteen thousand one hundred dollars for providing investigation and laboratory testing and preparing an engineering services report for this Three Bridges Project, which is now the Two Bridges Project, funded by the Transportation Project Fund. The city recommends that you vote in affirmative on this action. And again, we have the deputy city manager and the representative from Engineering Analytics to answer any questions.
So I remain here because there's a little complexity to the next two items. The next item on the agenda is the geotechnical investigation for City Hall, which we're going to request that we go forward with. The pricing on this one is contingent upon us accepting that, and we have savings because the drilling rig is mowed here. I'd like to get this approved, but we're not a hundred percent sure if we're going to drill one, two, or none, because there's still a lot of funding questions in the air. But I'd like to have it approved, so if things go the right way and I make the design choice with the engineers to move forward with bridge number one, we drilled just that one, we have concrete box covers at the other two. I present some funding opportunities tomorrow, and looks like I'll visit with DOT the following week about potential funding for the two additional bridges that were short. If funding isn't realistic, I probably wouldn't drill the second one, and I might shift back to a box covert on the first one, which would probably not require a geotech. So while I'd like to get approval, there's not certainty that we're going to do it. But we know without a doubt that we want to drill City Hall sooner rather than later. And if we do it, Jay and I will work together with Tyler on scheduling, where we would still get the cost savings on this one. But still a lot of variables kind of left to be determined in the funding before we can make design decisions.
So you're looking to flip in on this cover?
Right now, what we'd call Bridge Number One is the far north end of railroad. Lends itself right now, I think, in all of our opinion, to more of a prefabricated bridge structure to avoid utility conflicts and such. And if we go that route, we'll definitely need to drill for the abutments on that one. Bridges two and three are WPA channels. We're spending a lot of money to cross very little footage, but there isn't a great modern solution to that. So, I mean, if, if we don't have outside funding, we'll probably make some design decisions and probably take on a level of risk that we wouldn't if we were fully funded and probably, you know, do something different than a full-blown bridge. But WPA channels are complicated to work around. You know, we can't really fit something in it. If we knock them out, we've got a historical press process. And, you know, right now Railroad Avenue serves probably ten, twelve houses max. The Schuler Bridge was kind of a throw-in in the funding when we thought that it would all fit. No real super issues that concern me, we drive across it every day. But the two railroad bridges, I got to kind of scrape together my nickels and dimes and get them safetied up, so. I mean, I think we'll make good decisions. It's been a long road to get here, and we still got a little bit of road left in front of us, unfortunately. But if we could approve this and the City Hall drilling, we would be in affirmative for both of those if possible. Jaden's also here to speak to City Hall's project. I told Mike to be out here, so I share that.
Any other questions, comments?
Sorry, go ahead.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Which means item K should go through quite easily. Revised fee proposal from Engineering Analytics Inc. for the geotechnical investigation at the City of Raton Municipal Building. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, in your packet is a revised geotechnical proposal for investigation into the settling of the Raton Municipal Building. This proposal will provide a geotechnical investigation to the west side of the municipal building in order to determine the best approach to stabilize the structure. This project is funded under the general fund and everything what that deputy city manager said. And the city recommends you vote in affirmative on this section.
Questions, comments?
So I didn't look through this real close, so we're modifying then or substituting Richard Pfeifer's proposal for a redesign by this firm?
No. To clarify, we had contracted, I'm sorry, Mayor and Commission, we had contracted Richard Pfeifer over a year ago to do structural design work for the stabilization. It's been through many iterations from helical piers to micro piles, but ultimately he needs the, and that has a significant impact on cost. And ultimately, he needs the geotech results to make the determination as to what solution he recommends going forward. Last year, we paused the project because of how high his engineer's estimate was and where we were trying to figure out where, how we were going to fund this. And so this geotech work just allows us to continue the project that we started last year, which we have since added civil, Richard Pfeifer's engineering firm, Corca Pfeifer Engineering, was procured by.
The Q word?
Yeah. DJNA or something like that, another, a larger firm that has civil engineering capabilities. And so rather than just address the structural concern alone, it's highly recommended that we also address the civil portion of it. So a couple of weeks back, we voted to expand the engineering services to include the civil elements. And so this is needed basically to proceed with. to proceed with the structural and civil design.
So John Morgan's design is out, Richard's design is out. This is the third horse.
Uh, not in so many words. If I could jump in there. Yeah, we've got, you know, some time lapses between all of those, but we had a teleconference with Jason Andrews of Engineering Analytics, Karen and Tyler, and they've been in touch with Richard, and a lot of it is getting the best data possible to figure out what the design even should be. You know, there's concerns about pinning it in certain locations when the rest of the building may be moving, that, you know, we impact the structural stability of other parts, so, you know, talking with Tyler and Jason Andrews, it's a more complex geotechnical investigation than your kind of cookie cutter geotech. There's gonna be some complex calculations that Engineering Analytics will share with Richard that kind of firms up the design, because ultimately, I think everyone, we wanna do as little as possible to get where we wanna be, but I think, you know, John made a best get assumption twelve years ago, but I can tell you that we were having some plumbing issues today, and we snaked the drains, and we ended up pulling out sediment, so that's telling me that we've got enough shifting in this building that we're probably starting to offset pipes. We may be dumping water into our foundation soils internally, so, you know, definitely, I feel not the time to cut corners, you know, get the best geotech we can and make the right decision to kind of save this thing, and I think time has hurt us. We've drunk, at minimum, roof drainage into our foundation soils over the last decade, but we could easily have, you know, some sanitary sewer issues that are cropping up that are gonna compound it, so, especially, you know, dealing with Jason, you know, 'cause we, we had a very frank discussion about what other firms charge for geotech, what the cost of this proposal was, and I felt satisfied at least that, you know, when comparing apples to apples, that this would be the right route to go, and that our design team will have the best information to make qualified decisions. Tyler, if there's anything you wanted to add, that, that might be beneficial, but that's kind of what Rick and I and Jayden were all in on that conversation, and that's kind of where we came up with.
Okay, I guess I'm a little confused, 'cause we have a billing amount that fifteen thousand two hundred dollars, and then another twenty-one thousand one hundred dollars addressing the same municipal building. Am I reading this wrong? Well, no, that's the, what we just approved. It states that that's for geotech on this building, and now this one's twenty-one thousand one hundred, and it looks like it's duplicate services, but...
Wasn't the one we just approved bridges?
Yeah. That's correct, yeah.
Yeah.
Drilling to be provided simultaneously with that of the City of Raton Municipal Building.
Right.
So you're only, one bridge is fifteen thousand dollars, and the others four?
Uh, so I could add some clarification to that.
Yeah, so that's the previous item on the agenda, the bridges. Yeah, to clarify that, Commissioner, I feel that where our pricing was contingent upon, when they come to do City Hall, that would be the standalone price for City Hall, that proposal that you're looking at right now.
So the fifteen thousand did not include City Hall?
No, no. That, that last one was just my bridges, but it was, it was contingent upon the drilling rig here, drilling City Hall, and just moving across town to my site to punch my holes at the depths that I needed, so there, the two prices stand alone, but my price would be invalid if we didn't do the work at City Hall, 'cause the rig wouldn't be here in the first place, because mobilizing the rigs is about five grand or something like that.
Yeah, typically, so, Mayor and Commission, sorry, if I may add a little bit of clarity, you know, our fee, there are other geotechnical firms that have their own drilling equipment, drill rig, and, you know, certified driller. We don't, so we have to outsource that part. The rest of it, we do ourselves, we have our own lab, we send most of our samples to our Fort Collins lab for that testing, but it is, you know, ASHTO accredited lab, so we've gone through all the accreditation up there, but the driller is typically, I mean, almost, it's right around forty percent of our cost is just to get the driller up here, so we've done this in the past. Just last year, we drilled three projects in the city over at the RPS warehouse, the pickleball courts, and an additional boring, that was actually for the county, but, but it's pretty common, almost every time we drill up here, we try to stack a couple of projects, because paying the mobilization fee is a huge chunk of the driller cost, and then the fee to drill per foot is pretty minimal, so, so that's why we try to stack these. We had gotten the request for the proposal to repair the, you know, do, do the drilling at the City Hall building, and that's when Jason suggested that we add on, you know, an optional additional scope of work to do drilling for the bridges as well. For that project, and I know it's already been approved, we discussed some alternatives and looked at, we gave Jason some different costs for construction that we would estimate, and unfortunately, they're kind of around the same price, whether we do a bridge or a concrete box covert. There's a small adjustments there. Some of these bridges are really affordable, and we're hoping that, you know, the biggest problem that he's worried about, and I think they're all worried about, is, you know, taking out access to put in a new structure, and so that's something that we've been trying to, you know, brainstorm and come up some pretty innovative ideas to make it happen very quickly, and that's where the, the bridge process, we think, is a, is a pretty quick one. They can, they can actually, you know, pour a, an abutment on either side, and then just do plates over that and use the existing structure, and then, once the, you know, they're ready, the concrete is cured enough, they can pretty much set the new bridge on top of the old one, so, you know, maybe one day of downtime estimated, so, so that's kind of why we're considering that, and, and like Jason said, that one's kind of not set in stone. The city did, you know, or is planning to, you know, seek for more funding for that project, so I think we're kind of waiting on that. And Engineering Analytics, we're, we're definitely willing to, even with that approval, you know, hold off on the contract until we get clarification on that one, so we just need to make sure we make that decision before we do the drilling on the City Hall one. And then to add some clarity for the City Hall, a lot of the engineering disciplines overlap, so that's kind of what's happening here, is the structural design, he can't really finish his design until he has some, you know, soil data, and so that's where, you know, they asked us to, to come and drill and provide that soil data, and it's pretty common for the geotech engineer to provide recommendations regarding, you know, those types of stabilizations, you know, regarding like the, the number of those piers or helicals, the length of them and the type of them, and that's gonna depend on the type of soil that we encounter, so, and what they're trying to fix. Some of them, you know, it's, it's settling because it might be washed out, some of them it's settling because it's a, you know, an old, you know, field that wasn't compacted well, so, so there's a lot of different potential causes there, and that's what he's trying to nail down, so, yeah, just to add some clarification there.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the revised fee proposal from Engineering Analytics for the geotechnical investigation at the City of Raton Municipal Building.
Motion in a second to approve. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item L, deliberate an act on intergovernmental service agreement between the New Mexico Department of Public Safety and the Raton Police Department.
Mayor and Commission, in your packet is an intergovernmental agreement between the New Mexico Department of Public Safety and the Raton Police Department for an information-sharing program. Our department intends to share data with other law enforcement agencies and access information that was previously siloed by an agency. This information will be, will permit officers that are in the field, investigators, detectives, command, agency leadership, and policymakers. In short, what this allows is if, let's say, one of you are pulled over in Albuquerque, you know, we would be able to access that data in Raton a lot easier. Not that we are monitoring any of you all, but that will allow us to do that, and the city recommends that you vote in affirmative on this section.
Any questions, comments?
This is just a partnership agreement? There's not dollars changing?
There's no dollars changing.
I will move to approve the intergovernmental service agreement between the New Mexico Department of Public Safety and the public Raton Police Department.
Second?
Motion in a second to approve. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item M, deliberate an act on memorandum of understanding between the Raton Police Department and the Clayton Police Department for the E-911 ESAP Public Service Answering Point. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, in your packet is a memorandum of understanding between Raton Police Department and the Clayton Police Department for the E-911 Public Service Answering Point. This MOU is simply an agreement that Clayton Police will back up Raton in case of an emergency at no cost. The city recommends that you vote in affirmative on this action.
Questions, comments?
It looks like this is just mostly, it's still in place, we're just updating signatures. I'll make a motion to approve the MOU between the Raton Police Department and the Clayton Police Department for the E-911 ESAP Public Service Answering Point. Second?
Motion in a second to approve. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item M, deliberate an act on dispatch agreement between the City of Raton and the Town of Springer. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, in your packet is a agreement between the City of Raton and the Town of Springer to provide twenty-four hour dispatch services for Springer Police, Fire, and EMS. The Town of Springer will pay the City of Raton thirty-two thousand four dollars per year, I don't know why that four dollars is there, but thirty-two thousand four dollars per year, and the city recommends you vote in affirmative on this action.
Questions, comments? Do you know about how many calls we meet there, roughly?
I do not have that data available.
Any other questions?
We've had this agreement in place held as long as I've been around.
I think a long time.
Yeah.
Many, many years, yeah, no.
Actually, I, I think last year, we made sure that everybody's, was...
On the same...
On the same...
Seemed like every year we were doing...
Yeah. Yeah. The year before. Uh, motion to approve the dispatch agreement between the City of Raton and the Town of Springer.
Second? A motion in a second to approve the agreement. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item O is a deliberate an act on dispatch agreement between the City of Raton and the Village of Simarone. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, in your packet is a dispatch agreement between the City of Raton and the Town of Springer to provide twenty-four hour dispatching services to the Village of Simarone Police. The Town of Springer will pay the City of Raton twenty-two thousand dollars per year. This payment will be in January and July for eleven thousand dollars each. The city recommends that you vote in affirmative.
You said Springer, I think you meant Simarone.
Simarone, I'm sorry.
But that's okay.
For Simarone.
Probably happy to let Springer pay now.
This is for Simarone.
I'll move to approve the dispatch agreement between the City of Raton and the Village of Simarone.
Second? Motion in a second to approve. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item P, deliberate an act on professional services contract with Ayers Associates, Inc. for the brownfield program services. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, in your packet is a professional services contract with Ayers Associates, Incorporated, out of Shenway, Wyoming, for brownfield services. This EPA-funded brownfield program service agreement is made retroactively as of February fifth, 2025. The city received five hundred thousand dollars from EPA for a brownfields assessment and planning project running from October first, 2024, through at least September thirtieth, 2028. Following a competitive RFP process, the city selected Ayers as the most qualified firm to lead the project, providing environmental consulting services and support the successful implementation. The city recommends that you vote in affirmative on this action.
Questions, comments for Mr. Mestes?
Is there an escape clause if Donald wants his money back?
Uh, I believe, when I read through it, I didn't see it, but I didn't see it.
Because we're, we're doing this on a reimbursable basis, if I'm correct. I didn't see it.
Did you, can you do a quick query through this, see if there's an escape clause?
Escape clause, what are you looking for specifically?
In case we lose a federal grant or they want it back, that we're obligated to...
Oh, we do have termination rights by directional in there.
Okay. If you feel comfortable with it, Mr. Mestes. I just think it's on the hook if...
Yeah. So if they terminate with us, I think is our question, is that what you're, then, do we have a timeline of being reimbursed for the, what we've already expensed, I think is our concern?
And this is a reimbursable grant, so we have to go through the same process with any other grant, is, you know, paperwork to fill out. You know, I just hope that if something like this is canceled, they don't preemptively do it on us and, you know, at least, you know, maybe give us warning.
Yeah, they'll call you at 5:00 PM Friday and want their payment on, and maybe just an email, well.
Yeah, probably.
Probably.
I guess I was surprised it had this engage the community element, I didn't realize, I thought these were assess, you know, go, assess the property, be done, so I was just curious what that looks like.
Most federal contracts involve some sort of community engagement, and so that doesn't surprise me at all, especially something like this, when you're trying to clean up different parts of the city, you know, you would want to have the public at large come in and offer their opinions.
You know, is there an issue, 'cause the, the one thing that stuck in my mind was ownership of reports, so if we're having a property assessed that we don't own, is that an issue in giving said other agency this report?
Jay, you're probably the most familiar with this grant.
Yeah, so as far as the community engagement goes, a big part of what they do is kind of like storytelling. The whole purpose is reuse and attracting someone to come in and be able to use a formerly unusable property or piece of land or whatever, and, and so there is some of that, it, it's not just piers, it, it, they call it an assessment grant, but they, we start off with a community-wide, wide catalog of properties, a hundred properties maybe in that catalog, then we prioritize those and narrow it down to what's gonna have the most impact within the community, and then we pull the trigger on assessments in order to, we, we don't forcibly assess properties, so we get access agreements from people who are willing participants and have actually been receiving quite a few phone calls and requests to be included in the program, so we think it will be a pretty successful overall, and meeting with the Ayers folks.
I don't know how an assessment would become proprietary information.
They did make a comment in there that they just named the city as the trustee of the documents, and also I didn't know, does that mean that gives us jurisdiction to give, say, another property owner that we have, or they've agreed to have us included in this, if we can tender a report to them?
We can, yeah, we can share those results, it's not a confidential.
Okay.
Now, we can only do the assessment on a private property if we get the agreement. We can't go anywhere beyond that, just the assessment.
Any other questions? Claritate a motion.
I'll jump in there. I'll move to approve the professional services contract with the Ayers Associates, Inc. for... the professional services contract with the Ayers Associates, Inc. for the brownfield program services.
I'll second.
Motion second to approve. Is there any further discussion?
I'd just like to make a note, Mr. Mayor, if I may, that we, and I'm sure this is already on the staff's minds, but just keeping a close eye on what's going on federally so we're not expensing what we can't receive reimbursement for.
Yes, can we have a roll call on this one, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor Segada?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield?
Yes. Thank you.
Item Q, deliberate and act on recommendation of award for the City of Raton Annual Fourth of July Fireworks Display. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, in your packet is a letter from Raton City Chief of Staff, Ms. Michael Ann Antinucci, regarding the solicitation for the Fourth of July fireworks display. On Tuesday, April 29, 2025, the RFPs were opened. Only one proposal was received from Do It Right Pyrotech Incorporated. The submitted proposal was reviewed and determined to be responsive to the solicitation. The cost breakdown is $38,555.87, including New Mexico GRT, funded from $6,000 in donated funds and the remainder utilizing, utilizing non-promo lodgers tax fund. The city recommends you vote in the affirmative on this action.
Questions?
It looks like this is a two-year agreement where we would come back next year with, obviously, a different proposal or cost, but.
Yeah, so the solicitation was seeking a two-year. That way, we don't have to go back out for any next year. But this would be pretty similar to our other contracts where we do bring them back to the commission. So it's like a base year, and then the parties would have to mutually agree to enter into a second-year contract. I did make a notation on your letter that, you know, due to the tariffs and some other things affecting this industry, there could be some price fluctuations this time next year. But we don't know that for sure. We also have Mr. Scott Johnson here this evening. If you would like to ask him any questions.
That's all the only question I had. Thank you, Michael.
Any other questions? Want to let Scott blow things up?
We're ready.
I'll make a motion to approve the award for the City of Raton Annual Fourth of July Fireworks Display with the two-year agreement. Do I need to specify? With Do It Right Pyrotech.
Motion second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the side of aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Item R, deliberate and act on estimate from Mozark LLC for the replacement of the Police Department HVAC rooftop unit. Mr. Mestes.
Déjà vu here. Mayor and Commission, in your packet is an estimate from Mozark LLC for the replacement of the Police Department HVAC rooftop unit serving the Police Department and dispatch area. The total amount is $20,460.82 to be paid from the general reserve, general fund reserve. The city recommends that you vote in the affirmative on this action.
This comes with a promise that it doesn't talk to the other units, correct?
Yes.
All right.
No ghosts in the machine.
Entertaining motion. Any questions? Go ahead.
Motion to approve the estimate from Mozark LLC for the replacement of the Police Department HVAC rooftop unit.
I'll second.
A motion has second to approve. Any discussion further? All in favor, vote by the side of aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item S, deliberate and act on Resolution 202530, budget adjustment number 13. Michael Ann.
Mayor and Commission, we do bring to you this evening budget adjustment number 13. Within the general fund, I'm just kind of moving some monies around in the various line items. But the senior center line item, when the commission previously approved the proposal from High Tech E&amp;D LLC, this was to evaluate the convection oven issues. That would come out of our general fund reserves. That would just be the preliminary evaluation. And then probably, you know, we would hope in this fiscal year that we would be able to get this issue resolved. But depending on what the recommendation is, it could potentially end up in next year's budget, especially if it's the hood vent system, which would be significantly more than the other proposed solution. Other than that, in anticipation of your approval this evening of the fireworks, I am just moving some monies around within our lodgers tax non-promo. As stated in the letter, we have about $6,000 in donations from the prior year, and then the $33,000 would come out of the lodgers tax non-promo. That would be the remainder of the expense.
Any other questions?
I've also included the previously approved CYFD grant. This was the additional funding that we received for the learning lab. So I'm just adding those two new line items to the budget. And then we kind of touched on this during the budget discussion. I still have some additional abatement expense that were cash flowing for the Kearney School Project. And once we've paid Southwest Hazard Control, I can include that in my reimbursement request. So it looks like we have about $329,000 that we need to request reimbursement. Some of that came from a prior fiscal year. So that's why that figures a little higher. Stand for any questions?
Questions for Michael Ann?
Do we have a firm line, I thought we had a firm lined up to do the inspection for the hood?
Yeah, you had previously approved this High Tech E&amp;D LLC.
So they haven't done their study yet, not that I'm aware of.
I just didn't have it budgeted. So you did, I think it was either the last meeting or the meeting before the commission approved the proposal.
Yeah.
So I need to put it into the budget so that when the invoice comes in, I can
But they've been notified of a war, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I'm not sure on the timeline.
I think we could possibly get in some American Capital Allen for that project. Although we're running out of time there.
I know. Yeah, time is of the essence on that one.
If it does roll into next year, it might be advantageous for us.
For the emergency funding.
I guess my question was more related to, they didn't give you guys an idea that here's what we're going to show up to do this?
I don't know. I haven't been in contact with them. Maybe Jaden has had contact with, I believe her name is Margaret.
So, yeah, Margaret said that she had a deadline that has since recently passed, that she needed to, wouldn't be able to get started on it until such time. And so she's right at that point now where she was going to start her initial steps into her investigation as to whether or not the downdraft system would be adequate.
Your oven's not functioning now, right?
Correct. They're just using the regular conventional oven right now.
And she's had how much time to get down here to do this?
We approved at the last meeting or meeting before last, and she had a
I seem to remember in her letter that she stated there was, she was on a project until a certain date. When Jaden said that, that popped a memory in my head.
But I haven't talked with her since that date has come and went. I think it was late last week, if I remember correctly. But I figure she probably wouldn't have much to report even if she had started it. But I will certainly be following up with her.
Yeah, I've kind of caused some inconvenience.
Yeah, for sure.
Any other comments, questions? Entertaining motion to adopt the resolution.
Motion to adopt Resolution 202530, budget adjustment 13.
Motion second to adopt Resolution 202530. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the side of aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item T, City Manager's Report. Mr. Mestes, this could reflect your evaluation.
Well, I made a strategic blunder, and I bought pizza last time for this person here, and I didn't bring any pizza tonight. So I think that was a Mayor and Commission, bottom line upfront, the city has been dealing with a lot of uncertainty in federal funding over the last few weeks. We have received both good and bad news with a lot of potential surprises. We are working with our congressional delegation to clarify our status on a lot of pending grants, and we will inform the citizens as the information becomes available. The treasurer will be making a lot of updates to next year's budgets. As you can see tonight, the Police Department plans to pivot away from the original quote for the radio system. Instead, we will be transitioning to the state radio system coming in under just the 250 budget that we were authorized, same company, same everything, just going with the state. The Fire Department will be doing ambulance inspections tomorrow. City crews have been busy preparing for the upcoming All-Star Little League tournaments. With the assist from Raton Water Works, the Raton Public Service installation of the new four-stall shipping container restrooms is nearly complete and will be online prior to the start of the tournaments. Engineering reviews, reviewing Raton Water Works proposals for engineering services on citywide infrastructure. The engineer will also prepare another RFP for engineering services on lake stands and watershed, which will, did it go out today?
I think he wants to wait until next week.
That will go out next week. Facilities worked through the final details of the quarantine area, which is kind of a controversial name, for the animal facility. The kennel will, we have worked with the Humane Society folks, so we're ready to move forward with constructions on this area. Reminder that the city clerk must approve all notices posted to city property or bulletin boards. Economic Development, Ms. Molina met with the State Economic Development Director Mark Roper on issues surrounding Leda. Mentioned in dispatches. I would like to give a shout out to Adrian Mendez and Donald Garcia, along with Janti Abaza of RPS, who assisted with the Fire Department with heavy equipment operations at the Westernwood fire yesterday. And closing thoughts, yesterday's fire at Westernwood was the largest non-wildfire I have ever witnessed. The deputy city manager and I immediately left City Hall when we heard the call go out. When we arrived, Chief Burke was directing traffic and controlling the scene. EMS Chief Dusty Russell arrived soon thereafter and was helped provide additional command and control. When the fire was at its peak, Fireman Tucker Harriston manned a hose on top of an engine that was so close that he cracked the windshield of the vehicle. Entire department performed like a well-oiled machine. Other responding departments from Vermaio, Philmont, Cimarron, Miami, French Track, Springer, and Maxwell joined the symphonic effort that Chief Burke was directing. And I think, I think all of us owe Chief Burke a round of applause. That was a magnificent response. When there are fires, most people flee and run in the opposite direction. Our firefighters, however, run towards them. They're courageous. They know that there's a chance that things might not go their way, yet they push and do it anyway. You know, when we're all curled up and asleep at night, these men and women are out there keeping us safe. And my hats off to the Raton and our partner Fire Departments. That's all I have.
Job well done, Q.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, I would entertain a motion going to close the executive session.
I'll make a motion to go into a closed executive session pursuant to 10151 H2 Personnel City Manager Annual Evaluation.
Motion second to go into a closed executive session. Roll call, please. Dez.
Yes, sir. Mayor Segada?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo? And Commissioner Honeyfield?
We're in a closed session. Thank you.